Well, don't.
Call a meeting.
Stop. Uh huh. I done three dozen, so you've had real sound.
I have not even worked it for minutes. Imagine that.
Why you look for?
My pen?
Here's one.
Hey buddy, just out of curiosity, who's property line is she talking about?
Town. Over the, it would be the town, uh, Clay Township, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, that's not, that's not us. I mean, per se.
That just shows you her, how smart she is, I guess.
I thought maybe Stevie owns some property by, over by there or something.
Does she not rely on the town on a normal thing?
Yeah, another township home there.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we, we passed the ordinance, say, any undesirables and we have them moved to Centerville. That, that was time.
I think it passed, I think it passed.
I said, nah. Just say, it says here that Marshall Bush said that he will have information for the next meeting on the value of the Dodge Avenger, also received from the state surplus that the town plans to sell. President Buddy Struck, in effect, to slow down speeders on Main Street, had planned to call Milestone Paving to discuss rumble strips. We talked about that and, uh, Milestone said they couldn't do it because time they dug up an inch and a half, it'd be down to nothing. But Doug.
Well, we put, uh, what do they call them? Uh, I don't want to be, uh, impolite here, but, uh.
How's your phone?
Si- uh, city, uh, bumps.
Humps and speed humps?
No, they're like, yeah. I, thank you. I didn't want to say it, but it's like a little polymer bump and they, they like.
Talked about that.
They like, like bolted or they nail it into the asphalt and they can lay the bumps out in the rows however you want.
Rubble strip type things?
Yeah, like they kind of get your attention if you drive over them, but they're all, you know, you, I don't know if you're putting them right down the middle of the road, you, snowplow might have an issue with them.
Yeah. It's, it says here, it says, uh, the town's facilities coordinator Doug Wheeler, that the pavement wasn't thick enough for rumble strips to be installed on South Main Street. The street department made, will make their own humps in the streets.
There you go.
That's what Carthick's done.
Asphalt them right in.
Carthick's done that.
Snowplow, whoop, right over the top of it. It don't have to be very high.
We didn't pick up a new reserve?
They're repaying them all inside there.
David Glover, the retired Richmond Police Director.
Put one right there.
I said, we picked up David Glover as a reserve. He's a re- is he a retired Richmond Police?
Yep.
Okay.
He got, he got Sworin and doing his thing.
Sorry, a minute. Two hundred glow sticks passed out. Warmer grant, right?
Yeah. I think, I, I hope that you guys are sending them a check because they've been burning my email up and my phone.
Over less than two hundred dollars.
I know, I heard.
It's crazy. It didn't come in on time, did it? So, yeah, it's, uh, it's already mailed to him.
Ordinance three twenty, twenty-three, and ordinance fixing the compensation of all employees of the Greens Fork Sewer Utility in Greens Fork, uh, for the year twenty twenty-four. Ordinance four twenty twenty-three, that was for the town budget, that was for the payroll, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, salary ordinance. Scott, you got any questions? Got any there?
I'm not. Thirty percent.
Okay, Kathy's not here, but I guess she was gonna stay on top. Does anybody know anything more that's happened with that dog? Yeah, the, the dog got their, the dog, uh, has their shots.
Yeah. You saw the shot record?
Yep, I, I got a copy, they sent to me. Has there been any more issues, does anybody know? You now, you would be the guy to know, cause you're, cause you're right across the street.
You know Scott?
I've met him before and.
His, I know, he replaced Stewart.
Oh, okay.
Scott Cushing.
Yeah, Scott's a, Scott's a good man.
Well, that's yet to be.
Well. I haven't noticed any issues, I didn't know if he bossed it, he reported. No, I have not heard anything more.
Is it still tied up?
Yep.
Does it have a place to get in in the winter?
Uh.
I think there's a doghouse.
The doghouse is, cause we fixed the doghouse.
There's a big barn there too, Doug, and the little.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's what needs to happen. They need, need to somehow fix the, the chain over, or the cable to that, to that garage and let that be the, the little rally point where the dogs can go in when it's raining or snowing.
You tell her that when you talk to her?
Yeah, I, I did. It's like. Okay. And do we have any idea when they're actually gonna do anything with the humps? Is that something they're gonna wait till spring?
You're gonna have to wait till spring, your weather gets the cold, you can't pour any type of.
That's what I figured we were gonna do on that.
Asphalt or anything like that. We'll table it. We normally don't table anything for over, what, six, seven years?
Maybe.
Yeah, I'd rather wait till the weather's good.
Yeah.
To do something like that. I mean, buddy, you know how they, you know how they're doing pavement now, like the middle line there, they got a machine that it, uh, puts a pattern in the asphalt where it rumbles your car when you go over it.
Right, rumble strip type.
That, that can't be done?
Well, that's what I just, uh, that's what I read when he had, he had said that it wasn't thick enough to do that.
And then you got all kinds of, all kinds of state projects everywhere where they're doing construction, where they actually lay the rumble right on top of it, where it's actually, um, adhesive, and just let, they lay it right down like four or five strips of it.
I had somebody ask me, he said, why did you guys pay?
Those white strips, yeah, the white strips.
Pay thirty-eight and leave the metal strip and not pave it? I said, well, number one, we didn't do that, state did that, cause that's, state wrote thirty-eight, uh, even though it is Pearl Street when it goes through town, but that's the first time I seen them do that, cause normally they pave all of it and then they re-stripe, but here they just brought it to it and stopped it.
I think this is the, I think this is the temporary.
Well, if you remember right, we was out there, was it two years ago, and they was supposed to, uh, do sidewalks, uh, both sides all the way through town, uh, gonna lift the sidewalk up.
It's like Louisville.
Over by the apartments and big project, and all of a sudden, nothing.
They keep putting it on.
Money.
I think it's, their focus has been on forty, getting forty done from Indianapolis to Richmond to the Ohio line.
Well, they were supposed to do this from one to thirty-five.
Well, thirty-eight, yeah. Well, they'll probably get.
He said they were gonna come back and, when was he supposed, when were they supposed to come back? July?
Yeah.
And like do the whole thing?
July, next year or last year?
No, next year.
Next year.
Well, they were supposed to, like, they were supposed to do it this year.
Ron was here one day and actually, that's, uh, asphalt over at the baseball diamond, that little, that little driveway that goes back there, in this little spot out here, they had extra asphalt, we got it put on.
It was like, whatever you guys gotta get rid of, here's where you get rid of it.
What they do, you know?
Oh, yeah, he asked me. Todd, I know the guy that was working on it.
Oh, to get rid of the ex- yeah.
Yeah, when they clean the, clean the paper out and everything, instead of just dumping it and, you know, doing nothing with it, I was like, hey, I don't know how much you got, but this is probably a good spot and over there's probably a good spot and city potholes, knock them out too, you know? He was like, okay.
That's a good deal.
He hooked us up.
They gotta do something with it.
Yeah, exactly.
They can't.
You got any more questions, Scott, about the minutes?
No, not on the, no, it's not.
All right, and I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from last month's meeting.
I'll second that.
Supposed to have been made and properly seconded, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to be the same. Thank you, appearance by citizen, that's you Frank.
I think Frank wants, wants to open up his park, a parking, a parking lot in his driveway.
A parking garage.
Yeah.
With a fee.
Ten dollars a day.
Yeah, you said you can, uh, are you still working up there now?
Two levels. Can we get a monthly rate, you know, for town employees?
They got, uh. To the end of the month.
And then I'm gonna be a consultant.
Is there any way you can, uh, give Frank and kind of look at the plan? That's a very good question, I, I wouldn't, I never thought of it until you brought it up, but yeah.
Cause the street's just narrow.
Right.
Anyway. Yeah, I would say.
I'll look at you, see what.
I would say, uh, at least at, at a minute, like do no parking on the north side. Yeah, yeah. So you have travel at least.
Yeah, really good.
Appreciate it.
Now, what is it exactly you want him to do?
Check out the parking.
Parking on the new property.
On the street.
Opals, Opals.
No parking on, you talking about on, uh, carriage?
I understand people gotta park somewhere, but it's.
It just, it needs to know what the setbacks are on, on the buildings.
Yeah, you can't, they can't move it now. Sounds like you, what you said about possibly the north side, no parking there.
No parking. We can't be impeding traffic like buses or trash and everything like that, we gotta be able to get vehicles to work.
Fire truck, have them for a bit.
Yeah.
No parking on the north side.
I don't wanna have parking that's gonna impede anything.
Yeah. That what you mean, no parking on the north side of the carriage?
That's what I guess would be the best solution. They'll still leave them places to park though, right? Yeah.
So we work, so we just do the best we can do.
I mean, it's parking on Main Street, and why, he's gonna have some parking, there's not gonna be much on that property though.
No. He said off the alley, yeah, I don't know, how far is the building gonna be set, uh, to the west off the alley back there?
I'd have to look at it.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be close. Yeah, there's no room to park between the house and the alley.
He's, he's gonna have a, a, he had enough room to park the car back there. He did tell me that.
On the south side of the building.
But they probably wouldn't wanna park on the north side of carriage anyway, that's walk across the street.
Well, we're not talking so much about that, we're talking about if you've got six or eight cars parked even on the south side of carriage, it's gonna be a real tackle, like he said, for school buses and fire trucks and.
Yeah, we'll look at it again, we'll look at it.
But I live on the south end.
You're just wondering where people's gonna park.
I mean, I'm more tickled pink that that old place is gone, it's gonna be, but it's gonna be a problem.
So you're just wondering where people's gonna park.
Yeah.
That's a very good question.
Their cars.
And that's the man that's gonna figure it out.
All right, Bob.
What did he?
Checking out.
Bob, I thought you was retiring.
End of the month.
Oh, and that's what the.
But now you're not necessarily done here at the end of the month, right? Last, I have heard.
I think we're gonna have him.
Well, uh, gotta talk some pain now.
Frank, you looking for a good part-time gig?
Can't say I am. You can be our parking department officer. Get fifty percent of all tickets.
They got, they're calling a retirement party, but I'm not calling a retirement party the tenth of next month.
Where are you gonna stay on in Greens Forks?
I'll try to.
Temporary, well, tell us when we need to go out and find somebody. What about the guy replacing you up there, is he interested?
He don't want Greens Fork.
He don't?
Huh, was he too good?
No, he's retired from his business now.
Okay. Police report, Rick Bush, you're up. Okay. We just got, we just got notified that we were awarded sixty-four. Sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars from the JAG grant, uh, that's gonna be used to buy LPRs, which is license plate readers, computers and vests, and by the way, we'll be the only agency in Wayne County that had LPRs.
I've always said we're the highest tech redneck little police force in the state of Indiana.
So, and, uh, uh, our next meeting.
We've got some competition now though with Lewisville.
Um, I'll have Ron, Ron bring his car next meeting, so you guys can, can take a look at, at what the LPR is, cause we're not gonna, this is gonna be in the springtime before we're.
I just don't understand the concept between the license plate reader. I mean, my thing is, I know when the car goes by, it reads it, tells you who the car, tells you who owns the car, correct?
It runs it against a set of what they call hot lists, and those hot lists are created by outside agencies. State Police has one hot list for, um, expired registration, they have a hot list for stolen cars, they have a hot list for local Indiana warrants, then there's an FBI hot list for national federal warrants and, um, so when it run, when it captures that plate, um, it gives you limited, very limited information about the driver. Unless it fires off an alert that they're suspended or there's a warrant, then it gives you more information as to who the wanted person is, who the suspended person is, you still are gonna have to run them through dispatch to get enough information to write a ticket on it. It, it doesn't give you the, there's a lot of privacy concerns built into it, so that, you know, so that.
It's not necessarily gonna come back to the driver, it's gonna come back.
The registered owner, whoever the, like the registered owner.
So that's kind of like a.
You don't know if they're the ones driving it or not.
Start the pot here, that's kind of like a stop and frisk, but it's in the car deal. It gives you the right to stop that car no matter who's driving it.
Um.
I mean, if I'm driving somebody's car and I don't know they're a.
Sort of.
Right.
It, it's gonna give you, like, if they're suspended, it's gonna tell you their name, uh, you know, white, female, five foot five. If there's a black dude that weighs, you know, four hundred pounds driving, obviously he's not hurt, you know, so.
Can't stop.
So then you don't really have a reason to stop it. But if it's nighttime and they, you know, they drive past you and you didn't really see who's driving it and it's, you know, suspended or wanted or whatever, yeah, you're gonna stop it and determine if they're the person in the car or not.
So. Before they had license plate readers, didn't you have to have a reason to pull the car over?
You can run a license plate and a registered owner anytime, if you can see the license plate, you can legally run it.
Yeah, there's no expectation of privacy on a license plate.
There's.
But this will be a lot safer.
Oh, yeah.
This, this is instantaneous, so before where I sit there and I'm like, oh, ABC one, two, three, tick, 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 okay, copy, O L N, paste, registered owner, oh, suspended, oh, wait, they're already in Richmond. You know, it's.
Now it's instantaneous.
And you're not constantly staring down, you're actually looking at, at the road, you're observing the drivers, observing the traffic, you know, so you're a lot, you're paying a lot better attention to.
You got better government controls, aren't you?
Well, your situational awareness, your situational awareness is better, because.
Should decrease their liability, cause they'll build it focused on the actual driving.
Right.
There ain't no decreasing liability with the police department, cause they're going after police left and right for everything they can think of, so. Okay, I'm talking like safety wise. Well, yeah, safety wise, it's definitely.
It's a huge, it's huge.
The bottom line is, it's a good tool for us, it's not gonna cost us anything.
It's not costing you a penny.
It'll cost us a penny. Then I've got no problem. All right, so, so on that, so, uh, we're gonna wait for the official war letter that comes from the state, and I don't know, that'll probably be in January, it might be the end of this year, but it could be January, and then we'll have to, we'll have to seek short-term funding, because they reimburse for this, so that means that we get a.
That gets your attention.
Yeah.
So, does Green, but, so, you know, either short-term funding or do we have, do we have any cash in, in Greens Fork's account at all? Well, there you go, so, so we're gonna have, we're gonna have to fund it then. You guys borrowed from the.
They just went to the bank that the town does business with, they took out a, a loan for whatever the amount of the grant was, and then as we file our paperwork, it usually takes them about two weeks to deposit the money into our account, and then they just sent that check to the bank, so.
Did you take the total amount you rewarded or the total amount that you wanted to spend on something? It's gonna be two different things.
So the, the total amount that they're going to give us is, is that.
Yeah.
That's the amount that we took the loan for.
Yeah. So, if you're gonna spend twenty thousand dollars, say, do we just borrow that twenty thousand?
Yes.
Okay, we're not gonna borrow the whole sixty-four.
No, we're borrowing the whole sixty-four.
You got a sixty-four thousand dollar grant, you're gonna borrow sixty-four thousand.
I thought you said we don't even borrow what you needed at that time.
No, no, because, well, you, it's gonna come in.
Pretty quick.
If, if they have the equipment on hand to, to fulfill the order, we're gonna get that equipment pretty quick.
Okay, what kind of equipment are you gonna get besides the license plate?
License plate readers, new, uh, tough books for the vehicle.
I'm sorry, do you want?
New laptop tough books for the vehicles, the docking stations for those, the license plate barcode scanners and everything that's integrated into that computer, and body armor.
Are you guys gonna be able to have the Zercher put on there?
I'll put it on there.
Put that what put on there?
They, they have to have the operating system for the computers to be able to connect with the county. You know that thing that you're gonna sign, buddy? That thing you just signed tonight? That's part of the inter-local agreement that, that we use, the sheriff's department's Zercher program. By the way, the, the sheriff pays for that for us.
Brandon?
Yep. Yeah, well, it's, it's good to have everyone in the same system. Right.
I wish you could tell Henry County Sheriff that.
You must know the Henry County Sheriff, but.
I, I know some of the people over there.
So, we, we will wait for the letter, then we'll seek the, the short-term funding, and then once the funding is, is acquired, then we will order equipment. We will not order equipment until our ducks are in row, so. I mean, it's pretty, I mean, you've dealt with grants before that's had to, I mean, but I know Centerville's got twelve billion dollars over there, so we, you know, Centerville's got money just to throw out there like cotton candy.
They got the pizza place open again too, by the way.
Right.
Yeah, 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 I heard that.
So, um, Sworin, Jeffrey Glover as a reserve, he, he's, he's a good guy, he even done some work for us on the cars, he, uh, done some wiring, hooked up some lights and stuff, so that was definitely a plus, and he's got thirty years' experience.
He's also still tier one, right?
Oh, yeah, forever.
Yeah, yeah, he's tier one forever.
What's tier one mean?
He graduated the full academy.
Yeah.
So that means that he can.
He's got full league powers, like a full.
Well, we all have the same powers.
But he, but he won't have to go.
He can work in a tier one department.
Yeah, like.
So if you got six or more, if you got seven or more paid officers, you're tier one, if you have six or less, you're tier two.
And, uh, and he had a lot of, uh, dope experience, so that's, that's definitely a plus. Not smoking dope, I mean, he knew about.
Interdiction.
Interdiction.
He probably wouldn't have told you if it was the other thing.
Well, I'm sure he had to testify in court, that, yeah, it was real. So, um, there was a possible fight that was planned behind the community center, uh, a couple of people reached out to him, he ended up going to the principal over in Hagerstown, talking with him and one of the juveniles that goes there, and put a kibosh in that, so we'll see where that goes.
What, the two kids from Greens Fork?
No, none of them were from Greens Fork.
They just met here.
That wasn't me here.
They were just gonna have an old-school rumble, like the sixties, you know, when the guys were.
Business brings business, I'm, I'm cool.
Socia's and the.
Should consider putting a camera, is there, there's probably nothing back there. That's private property, I don't.
Township property also, oh, by the way.
Yeah, so, but.
You got the township to pay for one.
I mean, they, I mean, they, they've invested in, you know, a pad back there with a basketball with lights, so I mean, a, you know, cameras only a couple of hard bucks, which is what we, you know, found out, doing, doing the blink camera, so I don't, I don't even know who's on the board anymore over there.
They just got some new people.
Yeah, Lori Sturgis on the board.
Kind of went stagnant there for a minute, I think Kurt Bane might be part of that board.
Were they made aware of that situation? No, I just couldn't.
How did you find out about it?
People calling me.
Parents?
Yeah, parents.
He's up on all the social media, you know?
Yeah.
He's a big social media guy.
I mean, so, but it was, it was, uh, couldn't care of. Uh, spoke with several persons on junk vehicles, uh, one of them was the RV down there, well, the problem with that RV down there is they had flat, had, had four flat tires when they brought it over.
On Pearl Street, you told me?
Yeah, the one down on the corner there, so, but they're, they're gonna be working on it and doing stuff with it, so we'll just see as time goes on with that one. And spoke with, like, the person, Catacor from him and one of the modular homes, he's working on those vehicles. If people are working on them, you know, actively, I'm, I'm, it is what it is, but, you know, and, you know, I mean, not everyone's got just money just to go fix cars up all at once, so, I mean, I try to be as lenient as I can. Ones that are not making any progress, well then, they get the little sticker on them. Uh, the dogs at three twenty-two South Main, they have their shots now, I got, I got, uh, I got, I got record of that. Got a complaint on tires being dumped, end up arranging for disposal of tires, uh.
Where's this at?
It's on, uh, North, North Main, North Main and, uh, North Green Street, kind of a combination of different properties, just people, just people, uh, being ignorant, so, I know, so. So, we didn't escalate it, we just got rid of the damn tires and called it a night.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. And, uh, so, that's about it.
Anybody got any questions for Officer Bush?
Lights on the side of your car?
I just buy.
I asked him as we were going, so, I'm good. Bob, got any questions, need a credit, got any questions for the police?
Yep.
Should I? Well, you will have eventually, because we did get.
What'd you do?
We, uh, got that grant for sixty-eight thousand.
Wow.
But it's, uh, say, I'm sorry, sixty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars, but, you know, we'll.
I'm streaming.
But, uh, it's reimbursed, so we're gonna have to, uh, we're gonna have to acquire some short-term financing.
Only about sixty-eight grand.
Sixty-four grand.
Sixty-four.
What's it for?
Police Department, uh, LPR, computers and vests, LPR is the license, uh, wish.
Side by side.
They won't give me, they won't give us thirty thousand for a car, but they'll give us sixty-four thousand for equipment, so.
Can we buy, can we buy the equipment, sell it, buy car?
Well, you know what? You know what? That would, that would, no, you can't, you can't, you can't do it like that. That's, that's not the.
We'd have to lend sixty-four thousand.
I mean, I guess if we were in Washington DC, we could probably do that, but we're not in Washington DC. But, uh, yeah, I mean, uh, it's a good deal.
Yeah, we're not blown enough to get away with it.
Yeah, but, uh, but we're gonna wait for the letter to come, the official letter. And then we'll, we'll get with Adam and make sure that he understands, we're all on the same page. And then, then we'll go from there. I don't know what bank you, you would go to for a loan like that, but.
I'm just, man.
So whatever bank you use.
Well, I would almost think we did the same, the crossroads that did the car, aren't they the state?
Does Glover?
The state thing? State go-to? There are pains.
Well, they're the one giving us the money, the state.
Right.
State of Indiana.
But I'm saying if we have to get short-term, maybe, maybe crossroads, which is where the truck is.
Crossroad, oh, oh, crossroad, I, I didn't know what that was.
Oh, yeah, that's where the truck, that's where the truck is.
I thought that was a dealership.
No, it's for the truck.
Yeah, I said that, that, it would be a short-term, just for a few months.
Hey, Rick, I did have one question I just thought of. Do we have Glover set up with all the equipment he needs and everything already or not?
He, uh, he already had it, he's got his vest, I mean, we're gonna get, getting him a new vest, obviously. But he's already got, he's got a vest, he's got a gun, he's already bought pants, uh, I got a, I've got a shirt on order, so.
Okay, but he'll be, he's good to go.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He's gonna be taken care of.
I mean, I know he's qualified and everything and all that, but I just wanna make sure he actually had all that stuff.
Yeah, he, he, he had all that brought with him.
Okay, that's good enough.
Anything else for Rick? If not, I'm making motion to accept the police report.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made properly seconded, all in favor say aye.
And, uh, she does have, uh, Anita does have that folder.
Too late, I'm gonna have to hush.
She, she's got, they got, we don't follow Robert's rules there.
Well, we're trying to try.
Well, he told me he made a folder on it.
No, no.
She's paper in it.
No, the folder for all them documents you wanna sign for policies.
I'm sorry?
You gave me a folder with a bunch of policies that he had to sign.
Yes, I've got that folder back. I thought you were referring to the folder you told me to make the other day on this grant.
No, no, I mean, you'll get stuff as it, as we get it.
Yes, I got that Mr. Glover's, uh, package, yes. Yes.
Okay. That was motion carried and all that. Wastewater treatment monthly report. Now, excuse me, let me back up. Sewer plant operation report, wastewater superintendent, she's not here. Wastewater treatment. We don't have one of them either, do we? Do we have a wastewater treatment report neither? Okay.
It's all downhill.
That's all right. Kinda hard anyway. Facilities coordinator report, Doug? He's probably at a fire or at, who knows? Who knows? Okay, building commissioner report.
I'm glad somebody's here, Bob.
You're boomer, you got about five houses going up, four or five of them.
That's pretty good.
Everything. I got a bill for you for, uh, this last year.
Every day we broke.
You're gonna be broke when you see that.
I ain't talking about it.
Okay. Let's open it up.
When you guys approve the warrants, add that I can pay him after the meet, you know, that I could pay him before the end of the year.
Can you pay him?
Yeah, add that in when you make the motion to pay the warrants.
So I tell you, you've already seen these numbers.
No, I've not. No, that's why I didn't, if I had seen them prior meeting, I would have written the check.
Well, I didn't, I didn't do.
That's all right.
Till.
We'll get it done for you, don't worry.
Is it seventy-four hundred?
So, what are you wanting, the red number there?
Yep.
He's supposed to make that kind of money.
He said it was, he said it was good.
That's for the whole year.
They won't be paying anything this year.
This is the second time I've seen you all year, that's what I'm getting at. You better look at this, Brendan, before you say you're gonna pay it.
You're talking about the bottom part of the number right here, right?
That red number right there, I'm guessing. The highest number on the thing?
Yep.
Well, it's not the highest number on the thing.
Oh, wow.
These stuff members are much better. So do you want this now?
You don't want it.
I'm, I'm sure I would use that shot.
No, probably not.
You know, he, he's certainly not getting rich off the town.
Yeah.
Never had it all. Uh... Anybody got any questions for Bob? I think I already had a couple.
You're gonna have to search for some money.
He's, he's gonna look at that issue that he's brought up earlier.
Yeah.
He's gonna look at the question.
And then we're all agreeing, maybe making no parking on the north side then.
That'd be huge call.
Yeah, that's something we'll have to look at.
What?
I just need to do that.
Wait and see what's, well.
When is, when is their, when is their plan for destruction to begin?
They already started.
Have they?
Oh, yeah.
I've been by there.
They got one of the house. They had a footer report, I think, didn't they? And.
The one closest to the alley.
You have to look better.
They'll be built first.
Now, listen, when you say built, I kinda, and I, I've heard that they're just setting modulars, have you heard that?
Well, they probably are, they're not modulars, they're, oh, I forget what they call them.
TVs?
Yeah, they're all.
Pre-grad start to.
They, they'll, they'll build up a, a section wall and then just set the walls in and then nail them all together. They're not modulars.
Prefab?
Prefab.
Just prefab like.
They're pre-grad start to, right?
And, and, I remember when the horsemen built those ones on Pearl Street up there. There was some controversy over, uh, manufactured home, prefab home, modular home. And, and some weren't allowed and some were allowed, I can't remember which one.
They have restrictions on their pitch of the roof, what they wanted in their subdivision.
Yeah.
And sometimes your singles and your doubles are lower pitched roof, they wanted to look more like a house, they wanted the higher pitch. That was one of the horsemen's big deals.
Yeah. The ones that, the ones that were set on Pearl Street were brought in like, and they were just sitting on a, a frame. They picked them up and set them on their footer and foundation. Those are modular built and they have to have a sticker in them that they are built according to the state of Indiana. Same way with the mobile home, it's got a sticker in it and it's gotta be built to Indiana regulations.
Yeah, but these are.
A HUD home has got a sticker on it and it has to be built to Indiana regulations.
And we don't worry about mobile, or trailers, 'cause we don't do trailer anymore.
Yeah, that one up there that was Stewart's house, they set that in and it had a Ohio sticker in it. And they thought the company could go get one, a sticker from Indiana. No, they had to take it out and put another one in.
Oh. Then what, what are these gonna be then?
Well, these are gonna be.
They're gonna be built.
They're gonna, they're gonna be put together.
On site?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So prefab, would you call them a prefab or manufactured or what?
If they're gonna be built on site.
Well, yeah, I think people have to build on site, they, they built section walls and then they, they put them up and assemble.
Yeah.
They do that a lot up in like, uh, some of your northern territories and stuff like that.
Yeah, they do a lot of that.
Because they need to be built quickly.
Okay.
And so they prefab everything and they're all locked together.
Is it, are these prefab?
The, I don't know, I have.
I think some of those houses out south of Centerville, in Centerville but just south of Centerville, I think that that's what those are. Years ago, they brought in the wall, the water, the walls and put them together on concrete slabs.
They have the wiring and everything already ringing in them.
If you, if you ever watch television, watch Indianapolis Channel, they have a group of people come in and put houses together for, build them right there on the parking lot, put them on a truck and take them out and set them on, the foundation's already put in. That's about what this is gonna be.
Yeah, she said they're gonna put them together, assemble them on the side.
Well.
Bring the walls and put them together.
Bring the wall, set the wall up, bring the wall, connect them.
Are these gonna be HUD homes down here?
No.
Oh, okay.
Now, these are, these are gonna be stepable.
You know who's building them, right?
Uh-uh.
Dougie Tharp.
Well, I know, I, Doug's actually building them?
Oh, no, 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 uh, Randy Reiser.
Randy Reiser is the one that's building them.
Okay.
He's out Cambridge, I believe, isn't he?
Yeah, but Doug Sharp is his.
Tharp.
Tharp, yeah.
Is, Doug Sharp's the one that, uh, has the crew that's putting them together. They're nice, if, if, look from the drawings, they're gonna be nice looking.
Good.
They're gonna be nice.
Going to improve that more scene.
It'd have to be, be an improvement to that lot, I would think.
Yeah, trust me, twenty-two years of looking at it.
You're happy, aren't you?
You wouldn't believe half of the, the, the things Nita and I, we stole that house from her.
I think she's gonna come back and claim that property.
I, I hope she does.
We had nothing to do with it, but she thinks the town took her property.
Okay, anybody got any more questions for Bob?
I'll still be around for a while.
Okay. Well, give, give us enough time to find someone when you're.
He's gonna be around for a long time, he's gonna be our building commissioner from two thousand twenty-four and twenty-five. Yeah.
Well, I hope you have a good time with it.
Take some age off of me, would you? My years are getting up there.
Well, you passed all your tests yesterday, didn't you?
You should do what mom does, Bob, keep your hair not gray every four to six weeks, then you, then you won't feel as old.
That's what I do, I keep. All right, if nobody has any questions, I'll make a motion, we accept Bob's report.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say the same, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Nita, sewer teller monthly income and disbursements.
Well, I wish I had a better report than this, but, um, we have spent a lot more this year than what we're taking in, and that's not good. We were doing good, what, last year and the before last, we had a little, a little, um, pot there of money, but we don't now. So far this year, we have, uh, taken in a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, but we spent a hundred and seventy-six thousand. And that's not a good way to be going, I'm sorry, but I guess tent forces went up, everything pumps have went up. We had to buy a motor for the air hammer out of the sewer plant. And to put the, the heavy thing in, they had to rent it, equipment at seven hundred dollars to install it, it was so heavy. Weighed a thousand pounds. We don't have as many outstanding liens as what we used to. November the first, uh, when we done utility building, we only had ten, ten accounts into ninety days and the court treasurer had to record, uh, three new sewer liens in November. Now we've got forty-one outstanding sewer liens just to be paid through the Wayne County Treasurer's Department. Uh, we should be getting a sewer lien settlement, usually we get one in December, as they pay it with their taxes in November. But I haven't seen the email for it yet. So hopefully we will get a settlement and that will help our dollars.
Sometimes that doesn't come though, it's almost the end of the month.
And what do, what does the sewer plant owe the state board of accounts for the inspection that we just had?
We didn't get the bill.
They, we haven't got it yet, but they said it was gonna be around ten thousand dollars.
For the sewer?
For the sewer and six thousand, I think.
For the town?
For the town. For the audit.
I think they said something like three hundred and, was it three eighty an hour on the sewer? The cost of the audit?
That, that, they charged quite almost four hundred dollars a day, didn't they?
They did it a day, but it was.
I think it was a day, yeah.
That's, and then they, they charged separate, they charged for the sewer and then they charged for the town.
Doesn't seem like that, that, that's corrupt. The taxpayers already pay these people, yet we're paying them again.
And what's the option? Cause I, I offered to give them the sewer plant, I wouldn't take it.
He tries it every time.
I did, I did take it.
Yeah, but, and it's a five-year audit, we used to get a two-year audit, and the two-year audits actually though, were close to three grand, I think.
Yeah, it will, yeah.
Of course, that also was ten years ago when we got a, right, we've had two five-year audits now.
We had a seven-year and a five.
Okay, yeah, so.
They say we're no, we're no worries to them, you know, because we don't have.
Your risk is low, but we're still getting the same money from you. Exactly. And I asked them at the exit, I said, do, are we held to the same standards as a, a full-time entity with forty-hour-a-week employees and all that? They said, oh, yeah, yeah.
So they charge Richmond the same amount of money to audit them?
Yeah, but it takes longer probably to audit them because they're bigger.
Oh, well, that'd be, that'd be great.
The same, it's the same per hour, per day.
Oh, wow.
So my thing is, the last time we, we had the seven-year audit, I forget what it was, but we stretched it out, how many years did we stretch it out?
It was, we paid it in twelve months.
Or stripped you out to the next audit?
We, no, we paid it in twelve months and we paid three seventy-something for one a month and I wanna say three thirty-something for the other a month. So, basically it was right at eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, close to it.
For, for the seven-year audit.
So that means they're gonna have to give us like a two-year.
We're gonna pay foreign payments.
Payments on the, well, yeah.
Yeah, you wouldn't have dreamed that, would you, charging ten thousand dollars for a sewer audit?
They used our wifi and our electric.
Yeah. They had a key to the office to come in.
What are you doing?
But it really, it does go quick, I mean, while that's expensive.
They're like the mafia.
Yeah. Well, we do a lot of pre-work too, I mean, there's monthly pre-work for them.
Yeah, she sends all kinds of reports in, they know what's going on during the month, cause she has to email all these reports to them.
Anybody got any questions for Nita?
I wish I had a better report.
We know we're gonna have this expense like every so many years.
No, we don't.
I'm sorry, why?
They, they, they let you know when they're coming tomorrow. They don't let you know, we're coming, uh, in two years on this date.
Sometimes they show up at the door.
Yeah, sometimes they just bump in at the door.
We know we're gonna have to do it at some point.
Uh, Brendan said, how do you budget for this? You guys come here, how do you budget for this?
We don't, we don't.
You don't know how to budget for it.
If you had, if, you, you, I would hate to have to do it, but we could pay it out of edit if we had to. Don't want to, because that'd be all of our, all of what we have appropriated for a year, but.
They did say that they were gonna take the town out of taxes this time.
Yeah, they do take the town out of taxes.
But the sewer, the ten thousand dollars, we'll have to pay in payments.
Well, but we asked them to not do that. Last time Rick Stewart got ahold of somebody and that's how we got the payment plan. So they didn't take it out of our taxes. And that's, I guess, is what we're gonna have to see what we can do now too, so that they don't take it out.
When you get less than sixty-one thousand dollars a year in, in property taxes, what can you do? That's not much to run a town. Of course, we get edit money and, uh, certified shares and.
It's not a lot though.
Remember, but, we don't get a whole lot.
What we get is based on what, our size and what we are.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. But we don't get enough property taxes.
I mean, at least our, our town attorney gives us a cut, he doesn't charge us what a lot of towns attorneys charge because we are small.
Yeah. He feels sorry for us.
But the auditors, they do that.
Adam's a nice guy.
He is, yes, I think he feels sorry for us, he knows we don't have much money.
Well, he can multitask, he can do, if he's, if there's something going on, he can do it for Hagerstown and Cambridge and us, the template, and then split a little bit of, ease the cost up on us with that.
And he's available at meetings by phone or something.
As opposed to sitting here running the clock.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're lucky to have that.
But, I mean, whether he's sitting here or whether he's on the phone, it's the same money.
Not necessarily, no.
Well, I see what you're saying, when you're calling, it's gonna be.
Specific and, yeah.
But I mean, it's still the hourly rate.
Correct.
Right, but he didn't have to drive or anything.
He's not sitting here waiting for us to ask a question.
Yeah, does many hours.
Okay.
You, you done with our report?
Yeah. I'll make a motion, we accept Nita's report.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made properly seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Street report, we still got streets, nobody here talk about them, but we got them.
And you got a copy of it.
We know, we definitely gotta look at carriage. Unfinished business, the storm drained it, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I need to do a copy of the street report.
Yeah, it's kinda hard to. Yeah, it's kinda hard to, basically, it's the same stuff. They're saying they picked up leaves, they swept the shop, picked up leaves. I, and I've said it for several years. I would like to see on this sheet, I, I don't think that we should have to sit here and say, okay, on November the first, they blow the leaves, pickup truck, a wetzel, and picked up leaves. There's a block that says time in, time out, they don't put that in there. And then the, when you question it, and I've always asked the, uh, street commissioners, to do something about that, and nobody seemed to wanna do that. But my thing is, I shouldn't have, or we shouldn't have to say, okay, how many hours they have that day? Well, now we gotta pull a time card, see when they clocked in, see when they clocked out, that's why this block's on here. They need to start filling that out. We need to be able to look at this and say, okay, we had eighty hours this month between two people for streets. It should be that simple. So, something to look into, you need the fellers and all that.
Yeah, I have not that done yet.
I will, I'm gonna get that set, actually, they should've both been here tonight, cause it's free food, I'm surprised they're not.
My wife's on a trip. And the other had family coming in.
Yeah, one had family coming in, one was already.
Grandson or son.
And that's the bad thing about being a part-time entity. I mean, everybody's got another thing they gotta do sometimes.
Hey, but your street crews do a good job.
Yes, they do.
They do a good job, I think they do a good job.
We got better streets in some ti- big towns.
Well, and they just do it when they have to do it too. Well, they don't fill the report out very well, they take care of what needs to be done when it needs to be done without somebody having to always tell them.
Oh, I agree, I agree, it just should be easier for us to get them to know.
Well, it should be.
See, they're what they do. Old knee is drawing first blood on ya.
Do what?
Old knee is drawing first blood on Centerville.
Oh.
No, they got pretty good streets.
Yeah, they do.
We got better streets than some in Richmond.
And they did get all the leaves picked up pretty good.
And they got their gutters cleaned up, I mean, I think they do a great job.
And it's hard to find somebody to work for the kind of money that we're able to pay somebody.
Yeah, if we didn't have their own equipment, though, the streets wouldn't be paid as good.
Right. Okay. So they got whatever hours they got in, I'll make a motion, we accept that report.
I have you locked in, yeah.
So you want Scott to look into.
It's basically re-tune, excuse me?
You want Scott to look into them putting the hours down.
Sure he will, like I said, he's not, he's not even been able to, I mean, he works full-time, you know, they, he works during the day, they work during the day. It's kinda hard to, I'll, I'll try to get something set up.
So right now, they're just, they, do they have like, they have like a little punch clock or something?
Yeah.
The time clock?
Yeah.
Is that here?
Right there.
Right there, it is.
And that's the only one we have, right?
No, it's one of the sewer plant too.
But they would need to typically use that one, sewer plant wants to do, they'll do the sewer time card if we're out there.
Sewer plant, sewer, two different pots of money.
But, uh, is it, is it actual cards or?
Yes, oh, yes.
You can, uh, you can see in that.
What we're needing is that information transferred to this then?
No, no, they need to put down the hours that they're doing it, the time, like Doc Bud's doing in and out.
And all, they don't ever, so Rick, on his time card, actually hand writes, if he's patrolling, if it's admin, if it's court, if it's computer shopping, he puts on his time card. And I don't, he tells us what his hours are and what he does anyway. But these guys just clock in and out, and they don't put that they did leaves, or that they plowed snow, or that they fixed a hole, or trimmed trees.
They write it on there, but it's not, it's not correlated to the hours.
Yeah, they don't ever tell us how they're managing their hours. Or what they're doing on their hours.
They also built this wall too.
Well, Wayne built that wall, did a nice job doing it, that was a couple of years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Leaf pick up.
To have it done outside, we had bay porch.
Don't they do leaf pickup two, three?
This is Rick Shepard, that's Wayne.
Do they do two, three times a week, or just when leaves are in a pile and they got time to go get them?
Do what?
Well, we've tried before to have leaf pickup Tuesdays and Thursdays, or whatever. Are they just picking them up when they see them, that they need to be picked up?
That's what they kinda did this year, I think.
Kind of green too, yeah.
They hung a sign at the post office and on the door here, saying when their leaf schedule would be. But they did extra two, they see where somebody couldn't get them out on Tuesday or Thursday, but they was out on a Friday and.
Well, and if it's there, it'd be nice if they could get them, so that they don't blow all over the place or become a big wet mess.
Yeah, and Ricky also cleaning the gutters before they started the leaf pickup to get any sharp edges.
Yeah, all the stick and rocks out.
Yeah, you know, he picked up screwdriver and stuff, cause he'd get that up in the, the power, you're gonna break something.
Yeah.
All right, I'll go ahead and remake that motion to accept the, uh, street department's, uh, report.
I'm gonna second that.
Motion's been made, proper second, and all favor say aye. Thank you. Okay. Unfinished business, the storm drained, Maple Street is getting close, but it's gonna be waiting till spring now, we have, got a poor semen up there now, right? But it's all ready to form and all that's done, and all they gotta do is just smooth it over and it, that happens to be in front of your house, right Brenda?
We don't, we don't wanna forget about it.
That's why we didn't give away what it does inside.
Yeah, I'm easy. I don't complain.
Speed humps, we spoke about that at springtime. Dog issues, South Main, Rick says he has taken care of it. Ordinance regulating open burning. We have a current ordinance in effect, uh, this is just one suggested by the new fire chief. And I'll be honest with you, I haven't had the time and, uh, something like that, I'd just soon alter this here anyway.
And that's also gonna cost us money if we have to change the ordinance.
Excuse me?
That's going to cost us money if we have to change an ordinance.
Well, yeah, well.
Think long and hard before you decide what, if, what you're gonna do.
Well, you know, and I think some of it is just like, the part I did look at, one thing was, uh, if you do something, uh, if you're burning something that's, you're not supposed to be burning, it could be a thousand dollar fine. Well, my thing is, if you can't get somebody to pay you a seventy-six dollar sewer bill, you're not gonna get them to pay a se- a thousand dollar fine for, for not having a hot dog on a steak while they're burning something.
Yeah, and they're not. They're just gonna laugh at a thousand dollar fine and do what they've been doing all along.
Right. Uh, new business, Nita's beckon, your court red flag review.
Buddy, thanks for listening to me, I, I gotta go, but Bob?
If you don't hear from Bob, call me.
Okay, okay, appreciate it, mercury.
Hey, before you leave real quick, you know, uh, where our buddy's at, he's at the Springs?
Is he?
He's at the Springs, he's doing something better, but they're still working with him.
Thanks, Bob, wanted to find out, thank you, man. Scott, good luck, man.
Thank you.
Red flag review?
Yes, once a year, you guys, uh, review this, and if you wanna make any changes to it, or anything, you, you need to read it.
Just identify theft prevention program, Town of Greens Fork identity theft. I figure if they're still my identity, they'll give it right back real quick.
Well, we don't retain any social security numbers, uh, other than employees. We only have one computer. I mean, Rick has one, we have one, but they're not even interfaced.
But you usually read all that over here.
Out loud, in front of the TV, are you?
Yes.
Okay, I'll read it. Okay, Town of Greens Fork Identity Theft Prevention Program. This plan is intended to identify red flags that will alert Greens Fork governing body members to fraud. This plan has been adopted by the Greens Fork Town Council on November twenty-sixth, two thousand and ten. And will be reviewed and discussed each year at the December's regular council meeting. If needed, revisions will be made. And the senior management person responsible for this plan is Brenda, right?
I think I read that plan.
Yeah, you did. Basically, we, we had to, we were forced to, yeah.
Right. The Town of Greens Fork Utility is not a creditor under the red flags rule. We provide a mandatory municipal service that a customer can't decline. Greens Fork bills customers a flat rate for sewer and trash service, and this does not present a reasonably foreseeable risk from identity theft. Greens Fork does not collect sensitive information from their utility customers. Greens Fork Utility collects utility payments and TAP permits. The town collects billing permits, monies, sanitation fees, fines, and fees from the Town of Hagerstown Court. The town also receives state revenue checks. The monies are deposited into a local bank and balances are checked regularly. The bank's statements are balanced properly to the town's monthly balance sheet. Town personnel keeps all sensitive information, paper documents, and files stored in a locked file cabinet. That's one reason we built that wall, so we could lock, double lock the things.
Yeah.
Employees will not leave sensitive paper out on their desk when they are away from their workstations. Employees store files when leaving their workstations. Employees lock file cabinet when leaving their work area. Employees log off their computer when leaving their workstation. Access to sensitive information will be controlled using passwords. Employees will choose passwords with a mix of letters and characters. Passwords will be required and not shared, excuse me, and not be shared or posted near workstation. User names and passwords will be different. The use of laptops will be limited to those employees who need them to perform their jobs. Laptops are stored in a secure place and sensitive information will not be stored on their laptops. Employees never leave a laptop visible in a car. Check references or do a background check before hiring new employees. Access to employees' personal identity information is limited to employees with a need to know. Any document containing a social security number will be shredded before placing into the trash. Social security numbers will be redacted from any document requiring, recording with the county unless required by law. Procedures exist for making sure that workers who leave the town employee no longer have access to sensitive information. Means they turn in their keys, right? Employees will be alerted to attempts at phone phishing. Employees are required to alert the town council immediately if there is a potential, excuse me, a potential security breach such as a lost or stolen laptop. A paper shredder will be available in both the utility administration and police office. Paper records will be shredded before placing into the trash. Employees who violate security policy are subject to discipline up to and including dismissal. As a condition of employment with our town, all present and future employees are required to sign this document by signing your agreement to follow the town's confidential, confidentiality, confidentially. Is that, should that be confidentiality?
Maybe.
Okay, confidential, whatever. And a security standard for handling sensitive data. That's it. I guess you want us to sign it now?
I think there's a place on.
I don't have to sign that, do I?
He's trying to find it.
Oh, there it is. Day fourteen, correct? Annual certification of internal controls, nepotism policy, appendix C and D, council, and clerk treasurer's signature.
Okay, you need, you have Scott one. And Brenda gets one, and Kathy gets one, I guess we'll wait for her next.
Yeah, she might sign it whenever.
I'm sorry?
She gets, read it and sign it whenever.
Okay, I'll keep it for next meeting then.
Scott don't need to read this one out loud, does he? Go ahead, Scott, give me a break here, read, read that if you would.
Appendix C, certification of elected official to the executive of the Town of Greens Fork, Wayne County, Indiana, on compliance with munis- municipal nepotism policy. I don't know how you're gonna, I'm gonna read this one, but, uh, but basically.
You can skip all that and just say, certi- I certi- or certify that I am not violating.
Uh, certify that I have not violated the Town of Greens Fork contracting with a unit policy of Indiana Code thirty-six dash one dash twenty-one as amended or supplemented relating to contracts of my relatives' business interests with the Town of Greens Fork as further described in ordinance four dash twenty-twelve. I understand that relative means my spouse, parent, step-parent child, natural or adopted, stepchild, brother, half-brother, sister, half-sister, stepbrother, stepsister, niece, nephew, aunt, uncle, daughter-in-law, or son-in-law. I intend for this to be submitted to the town council president prior to the end of this calendar year. I hereby verify under the penalty of perjury that the foregoing statements are true.
Okay.
Pulling this out, right?
Appendix D.
All right, appendix D, the annual certification of elected official to the executive of the Town of Greens Fork, Wayne County, Indiana, on compliance with munis- municipal nepotism policy involving direct line supervision. Uh, I certify that I have not violated the Town of Greens Fork nepotism policy and hiring and supervision of Indiana Code thirty-six dash one twenty point two as amended or supplemented relating to my relatives' employment with the Town of Greens Fork as further described in ordinance four dash twenty-twelve. I understand that relative means my spouse, parent, step-parent child, natural or adopted, stepchild, brother, half-brother, sister, half-sister, stepbrother, stepsister, niece, nephew, aunt, uncle, daughter-in-law, or son-in-law. I intend for this to be submitted to the town council president prior to the end of this calendar year. I hereby verify under the penalty of perjury that the foregoing statements are true.
Very good, thank you, sir.
You're trying to pass some tail, aren't you, Ben?
That way we tell if our new council member's.
I'm sorry.
I knew it could, though. I knew it could.
You're funny. Here's your face now.
Uh, hey, it was. Yeah, I was, the two, three hours over that chair, the mouth open though.
Yeah, that's weird.
It hurts. Cause numbness is what I'm, I'm thinking ibuprofen, I give them meds. I got, I got some Tylenol, cold beer in here.
Yeah, make it work.
It's like your home, most of all.
This is supposed to be temp, or.
Town board. She's the go-to girl, right there.
It doesn't matter which one it says.
I'm sorry?
Oh, he's put town board, I put town council.
It's a, it doesn't, that's not, that's not, yeah.
Okay, I'll put town board in that.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
Council too, so.
Oh, yeah, they got, they got, they got several.
Next thing, we'll be talking about RD budget. I think that's what this is, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. And we're gonna let you talk about that, correct?
And these numbers were made up before we knew of the, huh, in the, in the, you know, these big bills that Chad coming up. So it's not, it's not, uh, showing that. And I estimated that you will, uh, bring in about a hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred dollars next year. And I estimated, uh, that you'd spend about a hundred and eighty dollars, a hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and forty-five. And that gets you a profit of one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. And you have, um, a beginning balance of twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six, leaving, uh, at the end of next year, you should have twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one. These are just estimates, because they wanna get an idea of what you think you're gonna bring in, or what you think you're gonna spend. But we've already spent, because I have to go by what you spend and, and bring in this year, so that we can get an idea of what next year, but that doesn't count in those big bills. So hopefully, you won't go in the red next year, so.
If we continue the route we're going, we will.
We're not in the red this year, correct?
No, it shouldn't be, no.
Barely out evidently.
Hanging on right to fall over that edge.
Just like California.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, it's gonna be close this year.
It's gonna be real.
Yeah.
We've been comf- more comfortable for a little bit, but it was terrible, in the beginning, it was horrible.
I'd like to see the books from a hundred years ago, to see where the town was at.
But Brenda will sign it.
You know, we actually.
Time, you want me to make a motion to approve that? I'll make the motion, did we approve the, uh, statement of budget income and equity? Well, thanks, sir. For twenty-twenty core. So, motion's been made, proper, uh, seconded for the statement of budget income and equity for twenty-twenty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Thank you.
That's just a copy.
I don't want no copy.
Yeah, it's a big raw, raw gas, isn't it?
Approval council meeting dates for twenty-twenty-four, where you get.
You can keep them the same.
The second Thursday of the month, correct?
Yeah. Yeah.
Does that still work for you?
Yes.
Second Thursday of the month at seven P M.
I like consistency.
It's been consistent for maybe about twenty years. There is always the third.
Do we need a motion today, and I just want your.
I'll make a motion that we keep the council meeting date for the second Thursday of the month at seven P M at the city building unless we have a special meeting and it would probably be at the community center if that's the case. I'm gonna second that. Thank you very much. Motion been made properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you.
Did you want that, all put in the motion that?
Just think that we could have a warrant, you two would be.
Say that again.
Do you want to say just the motion just to keep them the same, or did you want to say unless you have something you can read?
Well, yeah, I think we should throw that in, like, keep it the same unless we have it. Cause sometimes we have been to the community center several times. Excuse me? Right, necessity warrants. A larger facility.
Depending on topic. I think we're in the railroad, of course, the dog fight.
Yeah, and I think the last seventy, nine years ago, when we raised the jury, we had to make. Internal controls corrective action plan review. Got you again, Miss Nita?
Oh, sure. And Brenda can enforce it on this too.
Hi, Brenda, we'll need your voice in on this.
What?
Her name is on this.
Yeah. Internal controls corrective action plan review.
Oh, is that the copy I did?
I gave him a copy of it, I think.
Boy, I'm glad I typed and re-raced. Didn't type what I was gonna say. So, you were there at the meeting, we're all, we're, because we're so small, we're always challenged on internal controls. Um, we're not in a position where, like, when I worked at the hotel, the, my assistant handled the cash and did the deposits, that, but I had to oversee them and I'm the one that sent them to the bank. You know, there were two steps involved. We don't have enough people here for that. When the money comes in, we have to post it and get it to the bank. We've always had Buddy kind of in and out to, to, to see what's going on. But, um, I, to make the state happy, we're gonna have to take an extra step. And she said it really wasn't so much that she was worried about what's here now, it's for the future. Of, you know, to have it in place as a new person comes along and then they know what they have to do as a way to protect our money. And honestly, I don't know how these people figure out how to embezzle.
They've got one town that does embezzle like a million dollars.
And it's not a huge town, I don't know how they do it. I, I don't have the energy to figure it out, but.
It must be a lot bigger than us.
The only thing I can figure somebody is able to do that is because they're not putting in the work like you guys are here. So it's easy for them to do it. That they're the only one handling certain things or seeing certain things.
And there's, you know, the.
And they're not gonna get caught right away.
We don't do any ACH, we don't, no one can pay their bill by ACH-ing it to us either. We get, you can, you can do online banking with the check and the check will be mailed to us. You can mail a check or you can bring cash. We don't do anything extra than that. I, that probably helps a lot, keeping a lot of electronic stuff out of it, truthfully.
Yes.
We'd rather not have them paying cash though.
Well, yeah, like from not to. Cause we had that one encounter where they dropped cash in the box and then accused us of taking it.
Well, they accused. And Nita.
Yeah, the same person accused the.
That's why I got a new car.
Accused us, accused us of their house, losing their house too, right, that you two took their house.
Yeah, the town took.
But anyway, we.
There is a way we can avoid something like that in the future. If we put just a down camera and just have a, a place where you actually open stuff, the envelopes or whatever, just whatever in the corner or something like that to where you open it and it's like, hey, here's our evidence. This is us opening your envelope.
Well, I've got an answer to it, Scott. I do not open an envelope that says cash on it or anything until one of the other people here like Bud.
Or you, if you walked in.
Yeah. I'll let them open it, I'll let them count it, I'll let them put a date on it.
In that case, and like what you're saying, if we did something like that, we may have to keep that tape for seven years till state board account come back in.
Yeah, yeah.
Good point.
I mean.
It'd be our luck, it would, if something would go wrong with it, then it looked like we purposely got rid of it.
Right.
Um, but no, so that's, that's the two thing, I mean, she waits until someone's here to initial or.
As long as you got two people, as long as you got.
That's, that's what we try, but she also writes the deposit, takes the deposit to the bank.
Right.
And ideally, that probably should be a one and two, one and two-person thing, but we just, we don't, we aren't set up for that.
Maybe, no small towns are. Have it set up to where if you're paying cash, that has to be like.
In person, in person.
Well, there's a sign out there, but they didn't do any good.
Honestly though, would any of you drop cash in that? I mean, most people would not put cash in a night drop for fear of anything happening to it.
There are some people that do it though.
Well, they do.
They do in Harris Town.
Yeah.
They got drop box out the front door.
And they get cash there as well? Wow.
They dr- they've got cash in it.
Does their camera even pick that up?
Not out front, it don't. So I hear the size on the.
Well, you would know that envelope had cash or a check in it, you know.
Going in, yeah.
Yeah, they put it in an envelope. But I've just got a, very few customers that pay in cash, it's.
So basically the plan is to make sure what she's been doing is to continue to open it when there's a second person here. And then the deposit against the receipt that, that we put in the system needs to be initial verified or something.
Yeah.
And then the other thing that was a step was when we get, we do get ACH deposits from the county or the state, that forward you guys the email, I think's what we decided, isn't it? We were still tossing it around for an official.
Sign it here at the meeting and say.
Yeah, but you see, that you guys can see the original, that, and then initial that you've seen it and then the figures would never, you know, if the figures were changed, that would be seen after that fact, but they're not getting changed.
Like this, here is our certified shares and property tax replacement. Here is the original email that come from the county. And here is a receipt. So I would like for you guys to check those and initial them.
That one too?
Uh huh.
And I guess if it's something that you don't wanna do in a meeting, we can find a different time to do it. I, I just, we just don't have that many, so I guess I don't think it's that big of a deal for you guys to do it in a meeting.
And, uh, motor vehicle highway.
Where do you want to sign that?
Just initial it anywhere.
Oh, anywhere?
Yep.
We could probably get a stamp or something made that you could initial, we can stamp it with what we wanted to say. But I just think initialing's fine. Didn't you feel like that that's what, that Kim and Connor were?
I think that they will accept it, yeah, yeah.
So we're just initialing these?
Yeah, just check them.
That they match.
Right by the money.
Make sure they match.
Yep, that's good.
All right, right next to the money.
And they'll tell us five years from now if they wants to do something different.
Or eight, whenever they sign.
Yeah, or they show up.
Hopefully I won't be here to greet them.
Me either. It's, Scott will be, Scott will be sitting in the middle chair.
Yes, he will.
Okay, here's two more.
His daughter will be sitting on that one.
Either way, doesn't matter, that's fine.
And she's, she's got a lot of years yet. She's doing anything.
Gotta start them young, gotta groom them.
She'll be allowed to date when she's thirty-five.
By the time she's eighteen, you'll wish she was dating an already married, trust me. I raised a girl, a dog. Just gotta do the cover page, right? More than one.
You're just initiallying that it matches what, what came in.
All three pages on that one.
If you do, that's okay. If you don't, that's okay too. Just that what she's deposited, or I, whoever's done the deposit, be her, be that. Just that the deposit matches the money.
Yeah, whatever received it matches the email from the county and the state.
All those did.
Okay.
Alright, I think we have some warrants to look at maybe, and then we can eat.
Yes. She'll get through in a second.
Deal that.
She'll get through in a minute.
You just think that it would be a better way to keep a track, keep a count of money in the twenty-third, you know, twenty-three, you know, it's like, they're doing it the same way they done it a hundred and fifty years ago. It's, it's just my, it's just crazy.
Well, how could somebody embezzle a million dollars from a town?
You know, people, they like, I remember ten, fifteen years ago, it seems like I remember reading something that there was, uh, the state of Indiana, I hope I'm wrong, I could be wrong. Uh, they discovered at the end of the year, right before the end of the year, that there was a surplus of like three hundred million dollars that nobody knew that was there until somebody pointed it out and they said, oh, that right there is how people set money up to where they still it, cause if you don't have it, you can take it, they don't know it.
The state of Indiana had that, had that thing come out.
That's why I said state of Indiana.
You gotta realize, a, a town like, like Richmond or Carmel, I mean, they've got, they deal with millions of dollars. Fishers. Fishers, several. They might even get to the billions there.
I was making sure, okay, here's another one.
A lot of them think they slipped them, they do it over period of time. Little at a time.
The way it's set up though, it's, it would be hard to do.
That, that's why I'm saying they would have. The only one that's got the.
I will not dare.
Or they might be like, hey, just sign this real quick for me or something, the person not, you know, do, take their due diligence and actually read.
Oh, I'm sure that, that probably goes along.
Probably how that, that happens.
Say aye to it.
They're making. Add on this one to check it.
How are you? Hello? This is Danny, this is Danny. This is Brenda, four, how are you? We're at the town board meeting, Bob's standing in the front, said to tell you hello. We're at the town board meeting in Greensport, and neither is standing with a phone.
Yep. All those numbers.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Hey, your birthday's coming up, isn't it?
Is that it?
Christmas day.
She's still looking, give her a year.
Real quick. Well, happy birthday ahead of time.
Well, there's no more papers coming. We had a rose there and then it should run up. I'm not sure, I don't wanna say.
Talk to you later. I say I'll talk to you later.
I agree, that's right.
I won't. Alright.
Just give these.
Yep.
See you tomorrow.
So she come to the town?
She's in town.
Oh, cool.
I was with her all day.
Oh, cool, good deal.
Then she's going to Washington to see her son.
She lives in Alaska, doesn't she?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. So anyway, don't forget when you, if, when you guys approve those to allow me to pay. And I don't know, usually Doug's the one that has stuff he wants to buy, he's not here.
Right here, anyways.
I don't know if there's anything we need, we don't have a lot of money left, but.
Seventy-seven, seventy-six hundred and, we pay them every year.
Fire department?
So three hundred and eighty-four. Three thousand eight hundred forty-three fifty, two payments of that, uh, a year. Because they're not our fire department, they're Quay Township. It says Greensport Fire Department, but it's Quay Township. So we, yeah, we pay them seventy-six hundred or whatever.
They turn to the town for it.
Fire protection.
Yeah, oh, okay. I was just, as far as I'm saying, every year, the best money we spend.
I'm not real familiar with it.
Right, no, it's fine.
The best money we spend, we got the best little.
What is?
Fire department, by golly.
MVH.
Road of the highway.
My very helpful partner, MVH.
Yeah, and I really used to mean something years ago, it kind of was fun. You wanted to buy, get something, hey, we just think of MVH. And they kind of tightened, tightened the rules down.
Half of it's restricted.
Down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know, if you gotta, we don't have much money and sometimes we just have to spend it. We have to do what we have to do to survive.
Yeah, that's right.
Buddy's all about asking forgiveness, not asking if we can first.
That's true.
Uh, we, we stay, we do alright.
We buy, we abide by the rules rather than these big towns, I'm sure.
Like I said, I'd, I'd say it'd be easier to embezzle if you didn't have people checking on each other. If there's like one person or whatever just taking care of everything and not, and, you know, nobody's bothered to check stuff like what we're doing here, then.
And I told him one time, I said, we have retired, uh, portrayedor from another town, you know, he can tell us on our reports.
Because think about it, you could just, you could just buy a pump every month and that, it could be to John Williams Pump Service as long as they're giving you documentation about it.
That's true.
You, there's nothing. It's not like the state board of accounts is really a investigative department.
They can't look at everything.
I know, you're right. They crunch numbers and then they move on.
Yeah.
And when they find bad stuff, they, they don't have any power, they, they turn it over to.
Rick was supposed to have done some work on that.
What?
What you gotta take for that Avenger tonight?
We do what?
The Avenger.
Are you wanting, is that the one you want to sell?
The Avenger, that's the one we decided we was gonna get rid of, correct?
Right, Avenger.
He was gonna come up with some numbers or something.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I was looking in the three, three, you know, three to thirty-five hundred dollar range, what, what I was thinking, but unless someone wants to look at different numbers, cause it's, it's a, it's not like it's a sports car or anything, it's a, it's a, it's a Dodge Avenger.
And I've told it needs.
But we just needed the.
Two hub assemblies too, and that's, you're looking at five to eight hundred dollars there.
Yeah.
I mean.
But.
Gov deals as is.
Three thousand, thirty-five hundred reserved, take what you can get.
Twenty-five cash, maybe you get five.
You guys are, well, sell, you guys sell.
Don't we, don't we have to do bids on it, get bids on it?
I don't think.
Because it's under.
Cause it's under.
Well, I guess we.
It's under, she's going.
Three thousand or less.
So anyway, before I forget, I wanna, uh, make a motion on the warrants, I wanna, uh, make a motion we approve the warrants to include seventeen hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents to Bob.
Three thousand and one second that. And Bob, we are. And your social security number. Well, he said that, I was expecting a huge number.
I said I'll make a motion that we.
It's a small number for a whole year's worth of work.
Seventeen hundred and twenty-seven dollars, or seventeen, yeah, seventeen twenty-seven fifty for Bob.
That's what I thought he was gonna hit, was something that had number like that.
What was that?
When he said, you're, you're. And we already talked about that audit cost earlier, I thought he was gonna hit us something that had that kind of number on it.
Yeah, I, I thought that was low, lower than I expected.
Well, I could make it higher. Did they ever make a determination of what the, uh, the police car that you wanted to keep needs?
No, he hasn't took the belt off yet, so. It seemed to be running okay, I mean, as far as drive, just driving, that's why, that's why I think it's the, 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 what do you call that, the?
Tensioner.
Yeah, tensioner.
On the pulleys or?
That one's got several tensioners on, not just one, so, but he'll notice when he takes the belt off, I just, he just, he had that time to get, get to it yet.
I just replaced him on my expedition. Okay, what are you looking at there, Nita?
I think she was trying to find out about the price. Yeah, if there's, what's the restrictions for it.
Okay, here is the, uh, please. I think the one I got, how I began to buy so improperly.
Can you do a Kelly blue, uh, that is a police?
I mean, yeah, because the car itself is not a police. I mean, yeah, because the car itself is not a police package car.
Oh, no, it's just regular, oh, okay.
Just a regular Dodge Avenger.
I got you.
Is that a four-cylinder, six-cylinder?
I couldn't, I, I don't know.
That makes a difference. I mean.
Yeah.
Property sold is.
What value does it give, or threshold where you have to advertise?
Remember when I looked that up last time, it's a wide range.
Said, oh, I'm.
You mean the value?
Yeah.
Uh, public or private sale or transfer without advertising. If the property to be sold is one item with an estimated value of less than one thousand dollars or more than one item with an estimated total value of less than five thousand dollars, the purchasing agency may sell the property at a public or private sale or transfer the property without advertising.
I think you got two items and you wanna sell them. It's less than five thousand.
So what's the dollar amount, the, on the threshold on that?
One thousand.
One item, one thousand, less than one thousand. Two items, uh, value less than five thousand.
So you just have to advertise on whatever paper you, you guys normally do. Is that, there'll be a, for auction, and then you guys just set the minimum bid that, that you're willing to take to see what comes in?
Do we have any other vehicles we want to get rid of? We could keep them both under five thousand? Or is that, is that, am I understanding that right?
No, we don't want to keep, we want to keep the white car and the Charger.
Right, but do we have any trucks we want to get rid of or?
I don't think so. We just got two trucks.
Okay. Well, then we're good then.
The one diesel and one of the both dies.
And the red one, yeah.
And the new one and the red one.
Should we have to advertise it then?
Yeah.
Is that what it's saying?
Yeah, which is, well, I mean.
I, I kinda wondered what they.
Which is really not a big deal because we, we usually don't get too many.
Does it, it doesn't matter how we advertise. We just put like up on the bulletin board.
Throw it in the Western.
No, there's a.
No, it's gotta go in the past.
Yeah, it's gotta go on the paper. Western Wayne or whatever you guys.
But it doesn't have to be closed sealed bids. It just has, we have to advertise it.
Oh, I thought it had to be sealed bids.
Well.
It's not what it said.
It didn't, I didn't read that in there. I didn't, maybe I didn't read far enough.
And it's not more, it's not even, more than even a five thousand dollar car by itself.
We sell the property in public or private sale and transfer a property. Okay. I thought we usually took sealed bids.
We did. We have in the past.
We did. We did on that green and white truck if I'm not mistaken.
Well, we did and we also did it on the one that Aaron ended up buying, getting.
And also on the old Crown Vic we got rid of. Doug bought it.
But we took bids on that, sealed bids, yeah. And then we opened them and, read them at a meeting and.
So we can't just like set a date or whatever and just treat it kind of like an auction and be good or?
Well, you know, bids can, men say that it's gonna be, it's gonna be opened at this time.
And then we have a public meeting.
Right.
We planned for a public meeting for the opening of them.
And then the board would vote whether or not that they're gonna approve the bid. You don't, you don't have to tell them what the, the minimum bid is.
So we can just sit there and say we're accepting open bids on it?
I guess, yeah.
Let's post in the paper and say it's for sale or whatever we're gonna post it in.
Make offer.
We'll open the bids at the public meeting on da-da-da-da-da-da and go from there.
Yeah. Instead of setting a price on it and just leave it open.
Yeah. But I assume that we don't have to accept any of them if they're too low.
Right.
Right. Remember on the green and white truck, we didn't accept the bid because it was too low. And we, we said the least they would take would be this much and somebody came up getting that low.
Right.
So we'll just entertain bids.
Anybody got anything else? I'll make a motion we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion been made properly seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.